Partnership, the money that they have raised, that you guys have raised when you donate that dollar in the boot goes to research, over twenty new drugs have been approved by the FDA in the last several years. We have our MDA summer camp, we have our care centers. And another main reason I like to say is hope. You're bringing hope to the families with neuromuscular diseases. So, thank you. I want to say thank you to all of the firefighters and engine companies that went out there and collected. This year was extremely hot, as you know, and they were still out there and did amazing. Every year, almost every year, they are the recipient of our Golden Axe Award, and I'm pretty sure they're going to be the recipient again for 2023. But last year they were, and we're so very proud of them and thankful to all of you for your donations to help support that. And a big shout out because they were the eight, number eighteen in the country, their fire department was, for the funds that they raised for MDA. So, I'd love to give them a round of applause just for that. It's a huge accomplishment.
So, every year Montgomery Fire Rescue, it starts early in about January, and we collect for about thirteen weeks out of the year. And it's done on weekends. A lot of hard work put in by our gentlemen out on the suppression and the EMS that are working twenty-four, forty-eight out there riding the streets. And this year, as everybody knows, it was hot. And so, we normally take July off, but there were several times Chief Jordan stood up and said, you know what, it's hot, it's a safety hazard for our guys out there, and we cut it off a little bit early. But with that being said, we still raised seventy-eight thousand, six hundred, eighty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Our top suppression unit raised five thousand, seventy-six dollars on their own. And then we had a couple of close second places, but they did, they did breach the five thousand dollar mark. So, congratulations to Engine Sixteen for their hard work and dedication to muscular disease and the citizens of Montgomery. At this time, we'll do a check presentation, picture with everybody.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, you have a special guest?
I do. Counsel, I brought in, well, I spoke with the Airbnb policy group last week. We spoke about some things that we've been discussing about short-term rentals and how they had became a, it's almost a disruption, but now things are clear, but I wanted to be proactive and get ahead of things and go ahead and put something in place for those out-of-state Airbnb owners. And I also wanted him to just educate the council on their policies, what they don't allow, and if we had any questions. And I would present you all with the ordinance after we have some comments amongst each other and listen to him. He gave us some best practices. But Mr. Nick Martinez, could you come on up and just, you know, talk to the council on just basically what we discussed, and then they'll have some questions for you?
Absolutely. Good evening, counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with y'all. And to Counselor Johnson, thank you for inviting me out. My name's Nick Martinez. I work with Airbnb's public policy team based in Austin, Texas. Counselor Johnson let me know that you're kind of in the early stages of looking into regulating short-term rentals. And so, I wanted to come out and introduce myself and let you know some of the ways that we work with local governments through that process. First, I want to start by saying, you know, we're committed to being responsible partners in communities. We work together in a number of ways, specifically on things like public safety. We have a lot of tools and resources in place, like our law enforcement portal, which provides, you know, streamlined access for law enforcement to request information and get in contact with our team in case something does occur at a listing. We have a neighborhood support line, which allows, you know, neighbors, community members to reach our team if there's a, you know, property that there's nuisance concerns or trash concerns, whatever the issue may be. They can reach our team without having an Airbnb account. We also have a party ban, so I know that, you know, you hear all these stories about parties going on Airbnbs, and they do happen, but that's something that, when it's reported to us, we take action to shut those down. And the focus is really on, you know, rowdy guests, but also hosts who kind of enable that activity and don't take action when they hear about it. And we're also committed to working with city governments throughout the process as they begin looking into regulations. I think you all should have received, we sent out a, what we call our policy toolkit, and it contains a lot of just best practices that we found working with cities on, you know, how to approach common policy goals, things that, approaches that we've seen work well in the past on things like registration systems, you know, hotel occupancy tax collection, public safety. But yeah, that's what I got. I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you again for having me out.
Let me ask you something. Sometime back, we had a murder at an Airbnb location here. What happened on that? Are you familiar with that particular deal, or was it an imposter? Was it somebody doing, acting like an Airbnb and they weren't an Airbnb, or what happened?
What had happened? Was it a, what was the?
It was a party.
Oh, a party?
It's a party. Somebody rented the house through Airbnb, it was rented, and it turned into a party and ended up with one person shot and killed. Because the party got into the street, whatever. But that's our point. We're looking at, how do we control that kind of situation? Because it was, it was obviously a rental house, even, but in this situation, Airbnb, we understand, and Mr. Calhoun's not here tonight, but we understand there's some imposters out there now that are renting houses acting like they're Airbnb. Now, we appreciate Airbnb's contribution with lodging tax coming to the city. We like that, but we've got to get control of these party houses. And, I mean, you've got a plan in your, in your package about party houses, but this particular situation, we had a murder that night.
Definitely. I would have to know kind of the address and verify if it was an Airbnb listing, or, you know, there's other platforms as well.
I kind of mentioned it when we were on the conversation, and we were on the phone and on our Zoom, I talked about a little bit where was the incident that went way off the loop, and it was this incident where he speaks about. And you talked to me about how the partnerships, which, again, your commitment shows with you flying in to speak with us today, right? But you talked about a process where you could work with the police department and streamline the process with that, and how we as the city could track those registrations, and ways that you've helped other cities, and even ways, counsel, he spoke about how they assisted with the, with Atlanta when they passed their policy on. I think they only can have two if they're out-of-state resident. Now, this isn't where we're going to stop those that have Airbnbs. We need this, right? But the housing market is so short, and we're trying to, and my goal in this is, because we still need home ownership. We don't want our communities like Cottage Hills for me and Capitol Heights for me are consumed at this point with Airbnbs, where the ownership has gone, and some of these people have been living in their homes for years, and now they're the only one that may live on the street and everybody else is, short-term, they're here for maybe, and that's okay, right? If it's six months, nine months, but if you're coming in for a day, the idea is how do we streamline this process where there's not a whole lot of parties? And if you could share what you all do when you find out that it is a party and your process?
Yep, that's right. So, a lot of that, you know, shutting down those parties and stopping those hosts that kind of have repeat parties, that comes through, you know, working with y'all. If any of y'all reached out to me and let me know about a property, that's something that I would look into and make sure we're, you know, investigating that and taking it down if it needs to be taken down. And that's also where that, that neighborhood support line comes in handy. If, you know, neighbors are repeatedly calling about a property, we're going to reach out to the host and talk to them and say, hey, you're causing issues in the neighborhood. And if those continue to come in, again, that's where we'll take disciplinary action and, you know, suspend the account, suspend the host, things like that.
And would it be just that property or all of their properties?
It depends on, you know, kind of the severity of what's going on. And I don't work on that team, but a lot of the times the action is against the host, not the specific property.
Mr. President?
Yeah, sure.
Did a little researching. Birmingham requires Airbnbs to have a business license. Huntsville requires them to have a business license. Mobile is in the process of requiring them. And that means that they have to go through zoning, they have to go through planning, they have to go to, through the police department and the fire department to get these Airbnbs in said neighborhoods. I think that's the thing that we looked at. I think Clay and I worked on something similar when we was talking about rental properties, making those individuals that have more than three, by the state of Alabama, if you have more than three rental homes, you consider it as being, doing business. So, we got to make sure that we are, because, yeah, he can say, hey, we no longer going to allow them to do Airbnb, but they can still operate. And we can't, without a business license, we cannot determine who's with Airbnb and who's not with Airbnb. So, in most of the cities that you deal with, are they requiring you guys to have a business license?
It's really varied. Most kind of, when cities regulate, there's some sort of registration, whether it be they require like a traditional business license, or just a separate, they build out, a short-term rental specific license. That's kind of like the foundation of the regulatory system.
And do they, do they charge you per room? I know most cities charge three dollars to five dollars per room when it comes to renting those Airbnbs.
Usually, we see it per property. So, if someone, you know, has, or per listing, right? So, if someone's sharing different rooms or different listings, it's a separate permit for each one.
It's a bigger problem Airbnb to me, though. It's a rental property issue, and we need to do something to get control of. Because if I'm not badly mistaken, we got over forty percent of our properties in Montgomery are in rental. And we got to do something. It's, it's beginning to get out of hand. Because they could use Airbnb's name and then do it on their own, and we blame Airbnb and it's not Airbnb at all. And we know, a couple we've seen that we know it wasn't Airbnb that did it. So, Ms. Johnson, I wish you would push this, because I think we need to get something, get them under control. Because Airbnb has a system, but the other folks that have mailed out on them don't have a system. They just taking advantage of the situation. So, we need them to pay us. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay. First item, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, item one, ordinance rezoning one lot located at twenty-six oh-one through twenty-six eleven Woodley Park Drive from an oh-one district to a B-two Q district.
Chiquita Thomas here. You signed up, yes, oh, you, okay, you were over there. Okay. Okay. And we're going to kick this back to planning. We already told you what we're going to do, okay? We'll go to number two. Item number two is the budget.
Okay, wait a minute. You're, you're sending this back to?
Planning.
To planning commission?
Right.
Okay. Item number two, ordinance amending the fiscal year 2023 operating and debt service budget and adopting the fiscal year 2024 operating and debt service.
I need a motion on the budget?
A motion to approve?
A motion to approve. I need a motion to?
amend.
To amend?
Motion to amend.
Okay. Voting on the motion to amend, all in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous.
Yeah, voting on the main motion, all in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted as amended.
You sleep better tonight, okay?
Thank you, counsel.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, next item.
Item five, ordinance amending section eighteen dash one seventy-five of the Code of Ordinances prohibiting acts of noise.
Ms. Blaylock, can we read, can I put number four back on the agenda but carry it over?
You have technically not pulled it. You cannot take any action in work session. So, anything y'all discussed in work section was really not an action. It's still on the agenda.
Thank you. Let me take number three.
But now we're on number three.
Yeah, we're going to put up or down.
Okay, all right. We're on number three now, okay? All right. Need a motion on number three.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand? All opposed, same sign?
Wait a minute, I don't have the hand count.
All right, give me a count. All in favor?
All in favor. You say favor.
Favor, favor.
Well, hold on.
No, item number three.
Can you explain what this ordinance is so everybody knows what they're raising?
Noisiness.
Noisiness. Something that we already have. In the city of Montgomery, we had a, a lot of complaints about individuals cutting their grass before seven and after eight p.m. So, this will prohibit them from cutting their grass during that time. Also, the state of Alabama already have a idle ordinance, so it just gives the police the opportunity, these guys, these loud cars that's sitting in parking lots, just sitting there for over thirty minutes, revving and idling their car next door to you or in a parking lot. So, just give us the ability to tell them to cut it out.
That's free vote. You have a motion to approve? All in favor, raise your hand?
Two, nine, five.
Okay, all opposed, same sign?
Three.
All right.
We got one answer.
Motion carried.
Chief, y'all come lock me up when I start cutting my grass too early in the morning.
Yeah, just don't, don't have a loud mucker.
Yeah, and I won't leave the car running while I do it either.
All right, now, item number four?
Item number four, resolution declaring American Christian heritage.
Bradley, what you want to do?
I think there's some discussion on this.
Okay, I don't have anybody to sign. I do have somebody. Gina Smith signed up to speak on this item. Ms. Smith?
Ms. Smith?
Gina Smith. Ms. Smith, you here? Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Mrs. Graham spoke very passionately a few minutes ago about Christians being allowed, being able to fly flags in Montgomery. And Mr. Lyons obviously feels deeply about this too, or he would not have brought this resolution. The thing is, you can, but as a body, a government body, you cannot, because the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment states, there must be a separation of church and state. And y'all, as a government body, cannot say, we prefer this religion over all others. And I want to read you what the Supreme Court has said about this. Over and over again, different cities have tried by making nativity scenes, putting up crosses, flying flags. Lake City, Florida, Knoxville, Tennessee, Springfield, Massachusetts, Pierre, South Dakota, the list goes on. And every time, the Supreme Court has said, no, y'all cannot do that. And I'd like to read what they say, because I want to convince you that it would not be a good road for our city government to go down. Decades-long battle over places of worship and tradition in public life have erupted nearly every year when local governments sponsor holiday displays. This flag falls into the same category, ladies and gentlemen, as a Christmas display. On this question, the First Amendment has two broad answers, and I will leave this with you. Any private citizen can put up a cross, a nativity scene, or whatever they like, but governments may not, because the government does not have the right to free speech. You must follow the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment, and that states that anything that you put out there has to have a secular purpose as well as a religious purpose. It must not favor one religion over others, and it must not prohibit religious expression. I ask you to weigh what the right thing is to do for Montgomery and the people who are not Christian in your city.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I say something to Ms. Smith, just since she addressed it, I spoke about this? Actually, I don't think we as a government are attempting to put this up here. There were some citizens who came and asked us about doing that, that it wasn't the council ourselves that just said, we are going to do it. So, it wasn't that. But then I think their position was is that other beliefs and faiths have flown flags, and so they just wanted to also do the same thing. And so, and that's where we are. But I do appreciate you for sharing that with us, but I don't think this council, as a legal body, is wanting to fly any flags, to be honest with you, other than the American flag, the city flag, the state flag. And outside of those three, I don't think we have, as the, as a council, considered any of those. It's the citizens of this great city who has consulted us about different flags or different, you know, murals or whatever we've talked about here tonight.
Good evening. And you were absolutely correct. I was the one that actually petitioned the city to fly the flag.
Mr. Green, he didn't sign up, sorry.
Thank you. Y'all have a nice day.
Thank you.
Councillor Brown.
You want to call on him? Yeah. Okay. You had on another bunch, Pete.
Thank you.
No, 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 I gave him a sign up. I gave him a sign up, I let him talk.
Okay. The reason that I even petitioned was because the city had already set a precedent for the past four years, that they do allow the flags to express an opinion. And it was similar to the Supreme Court case that just was decided within a year, nine-zero by the Supreme Court, that once the city established a precedent, that once you allow other flags to be flown, it is not government speech, it is free speech. Therefore, the city cannot then prohibit any free speech. So, therefore, with Shirklett versus the city of Boston, it was decided nine-zero that it was okay to fly the Christian flag, and thus they did fly the flag, Christian flag in the city of Boston. So, what I'm asking again is that I'm not here to be anti-anything. Matter of fact, I'm for anyone else that wants to come up here and ask that their flag be flown also. I would not be hypocri, I would be hypocritical if I was against any other flag. I'm here as lifting up the name of Jesus, and I'm pro-Christianity. If any other religion, Buddhists, Hindus, whatever, want to come here and ask for that, I'm a hundred percent for that. Because once again, once it's established that the flags are available for free speech, all I'm asking for, the city council, is to allow me and other Christians that feel this way to get our time to fly our Christian flag, as others have already been given that. Thank you.
Mr. President, thank you, Ms. McGreen. Just for the record, because that was done during work session, the clergy that spoke, could you please stand? Those that spoke in opposition of this, and that was where our clergyman that did that. That is just for the record. And again, this is not the platform for that as a government body. I know what anybody else's religion is across here, but we just should not do that. I'm totally against it. And I know, Brantley, you already stated you wanted to pull it. What is your position on this at the moment?
Well, Marsha, let me make one thing. I don't think we should be flying any flags. I truly believe that. We've done that. And in the Supreme Court, I've read the case that William and Brantley's talked about. The Supreme Court ruled nine-o against the city of Boston, cost them two and a half million dollars plus attorney fees. So, they've lost the case. When we flew other flags, we allowed that. I am for voting that we don't fly any flags. So, that's, it's not, it's not a Christian, it's not a Hindu, it's not a Buddhist, it's not on anything where they'll fly any flags.
I'm in agreement.
Mr. President, just one, one real quick question. When you say we, I don't think that we, as the council, gave anybody permission to flag, I mean, to fly a flag. So, when we say we, this is the first time that somebody has came up to the council as a whole to ask for this. So, we are saying we, we have not. So, the council as a body have not gave anybody permission. So, we're saying we, but no, it's not we. So, we didn't give anybody permission as the council to fly a flag. So, I want to make that, make that clear. We did not.
Well, that's right. But through executive action and prior action.
And please say that. Say, say what it is. Don't say the council.
And by the councils sitting aside and not opposing that, they allowed it and ratified it and condoned it. And so, the door is open. And you, y'all fuss all you want and say that the council didn't do anything, but at the end of the day, the door is open.
We, 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 we stayed in facts.
If we, if we look at number ten, my substitute, I'm trying to shut the door.
Okay. All right, what's going to do with number four? Number four?
So, we're pulling number four?
You can put it away? What's going to do with number four?
Well, we, we can hold it and address number ten, and then vote, vote it. What do you want?
You want to vote on it now, vote it?
Yeah, let's just go here. He needs to speak into his mic. I can't hear what he's saying.
I can't hear you.
I say we can hold it and look at number ten.
Make a decision, make a decision, Brantley. Okay?
Hold it to the end of the agenda.
Okay. Whatever you want to do. Number five.
Item five, ordinance amending section fifty dash twenty nineteen, section two. Council rules for procedure for work session to begin at three-thirty.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt this item?
We, we're gonna, we asked, I'm gonna ask that it be carried over.
Okay, carried over. How long?
The first meeting, what meeting would that be, Ms. Blaylock?
You, you just want to withdraw this one because it will sign and die.
Yes, let me withdraw. I would like to withdraw.
Okay, good. Number six?
Resolution setting a moratorium on all construction of Bell Road beginning November the first, twenty twenty-three.
Venus Babies signed up on this item? Venus?
What's the name again, please, sir?
I have Venus Babies.
Hello, hello, I'm Venus Babies. I signed up on this item by mistake, but?
You did, okay.
It's close to where I'm talking about.
Which one, which one you signed up for?
Number six on Bell.
I got you on number six. That's where we at?
We at Bell Road.
Right, that's where we at.
What I was trying to do was to submit this form again for Clay Street. It was a piece of property, it's not on Bell Road, it's right, right down from it. And I was just trying to submit it again. It's been a year and a half, and we are celebrating our, our hundred and seventeenth church anniversary. And I was trying to see if we could get this property, go ahead and get it signed before, before then.
You said Clay Street?
Clay Street.
That's not for Bell Street, but? And I think the department spoke with her and told her that they will submit it up, and I think they might be with Mr. Reed now, our COO. He may have them to look over. So, can she give you that in case it's not in the stack that was already submitted over to you?
Yeah, I'll take them, and then we'll review them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Item number seven?
We, we're going to, Stacy asked that I carry that over.
Okay, carry it over.
To the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am, to the next meeting.
All right, number seven?
Item seven, ordinance rezoning a parcel of land southeast corner of Taylor Road and Halsey and Park Drive from an oh-one district to a B-two district.
It's been withdrawn?
Yes, that has been withdrawn.
Okay.
Item number eight, resolution recognizing Jamari Terrell Williams' day on October the eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Counsel, I'm asking that we, this request was made by the mother that we do this to honor her son. And so, I'm asking that we sign this resolution declaring October the eleventh his day in honor of him. We'll present it to them on next council meeting if the council approves this tonight. And if you do approve it, I ask that you all sign it. I have the original one here. Ms. Blaylock has provided for us to sign.
I need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, raise your hand?
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
All right. Pass and sign. Okay, item number nine?
Item number nine, ordinance regulating by flying the flags.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand?
Is there no discussion on this?
If we, if we suspend the rules, if we suspend the rules, we will discuss.
Motion to adopt?
No, you can't suspend the rules.
I don't have, all those in favor of suspension, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Okay. Now, discussion?
Now, this only deals with flagpoles on city property. It don't talk about any other, anything else on any other city property, and it doesn't fix the problem.
I agree.
And, but I, and I, and I understand exactly what you're saying, Brantley, but, and I was a little- was a little, anyway, when, you know, as I began to read it, I thought that when Mr. Williams came, I meant Mr. Green, he's gone, okay. I thought when Mr. Green came, that we were talking about right, just right here, the flagpoles. I didn't know that we were talking about the other places, city property, but I know that was something we talked about.
He was not, he was talking about across the street, but his, in his resolution. So in his resolution-
Light poles.
Yeah, he was talking about the light poles.
Well, but also not your flags. It was like established in a, a Christian heritage book. Awesome. And it was a four-page resolution.
It was.
Put it in.
All right.
Again, I think the substitute that I-
I need a motion on this.
I think if we do the substitute of the 10 with the paragraph deleted that you mentioned would fix everything.
Okay, we're, we're on nine right now.
Uh, motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Five?
All opposed?
Two? I'm missing one.
Nine, nine.
I'm missing one.
He abstained.
Mr., Mr. Lyons, how do you vote?
We're talking about number nine.
He said he was in agreement.
It's only deal with flagpoles.
I don't have your vote on this one. I've got everybody's vote, which is yours.
He's okay with it.
He's okay with it.
Are you voting yes on number nine?
Mr. Lyons says he's voting yes. Mr. Lyons, you voting yes?
Yeah.
Yeah, he's voting yes.
Okay, there changes to six and two and one. The resol-, the ordinance is adopted.
Going to number 10?
Resolution to maintain and confirm the neutrality of the City of Montgomery towards its residents.
I'd like to take that substitute that we had on number 10 and delete that final paragraph.
Wait a minute, you're gonna have to make, make a motion to adopt this.
The motion to suspend the rules, first of all.
Yeah.
The motion to suspend the rules?
Move to suspend the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
I want to do a motion to adopt.
Hold, hold, suspend the rules.
Okay, Rodney didn't suspend the rules.
I did not suspend the rules either.
Okay.
You're not.
All right.
Three and six.
It'll be carried over.
Carried over.
I show three and six voting no, is that correct?
Carried over.
Right.
That automatically carries it over.
Okay. Item number 11? All right.
Resolution authorizing show cause hearing of Aurora Lounge, 5480 Atlanta Highway for October the 10th.
Representative of Royal-
They're right there.
Okay.
Now, this is not the show cause hearing. The show cause hearing will be October the 10th. This is just setting the show cause.
Okay, so that's all we do? We're not, we're not gonna have a conversation today?
If you have that conversation, they need to come back and do the same thing on the 10th, so it will be part of the record.
I'm, I'm just gonna tell them, guys, you're gonna be on it October the 10th, and we're gonna decide whether we pull your business license or not, plain and simple.
October 10th.
October 10th, okay?
All right, assist and date.
Thank you.
All right, number 12?
You gotta adopt this resolution.
I'm sorry. The motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
One, one second.
The motion to suspend the rule, number 11?
That's the second Tuesday, you mean the 17th?
No, it's the 10th.
It's the 10th?
Yes, ma'am.
Meeting is on the 10th?
We don't meet on the 10th.
We changed it because of, we've got to canvass the returns on October the 10th. We're not meeting on October the 3rd by resolution. Now changed it.
The election, okay.
Okay, all right. Motion to suspend the rules?
I need, I need the vote on suspension of rules, please.
Motion, okay. Brantley, raise your hand, we need to suspend the rules.
Ms. Graham, are you voting? Unanimous?
Okay, now I need a motion on item number 11.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Number 12?
Item 12, resolution to obligate funding for violent crime programming as a dollar-for-dollar match for the Safety Home Pilot Series Grant.
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Mr. Jenrider, you voting?
I'm voting no.
You're voting no, so that's going to be seven with one no.
Okay.
Resolution is adopted. Item 13, resolution to approve the selected vendor for the Small Business Support Program from the Montgomery Thrive Initiative.
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Okay, hands back up. Six, I have one and nine abstaining, or voting no. So the, the resolution carries.
All right, number 14?
Application for a wine festival license by the Department of Cultural Affairs doing business as Riverwalk Wine Festival, 300 Water Street.
Representative of Cultural, the Riverwalk Wine Festival here, please. So I have my city, okay. There we go. Hi there.
Hi.
Your name, please?
Kathy Schufert.
Ms. Schufert, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none in declared public hearing, it's been held, par for the council, any motion?
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you now. Good luck with that.
Item 15, application for retail beer owner off premises and retail table wine owner off premises doing business as Magnum Opus Cigars at 2921 Chestnut Street.
Representative Magnum Opus Cigars here, please. He's been to say, yeah. Your name for the record, please?
How you doing? Katrina Wetlow, and this is my husband, William Wetlow.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none in declared public hearing, it's been held, par for the council?
Uh, only, I just have adjustment. It needs to be, Brantley-
It needs to be in the rules first.
Uh, motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
The adjustment is it's gonna be on premises.
Okay.
Y'all understand it?
That's fine.
Okay.
You understand that? All right.
All right, motion to adopt?
Motion to adj-, to, motion to amend?
We need a motion to adopt, then a motion to amend.
Yeah, I got the motion to, all right, motion to amend, voting on the motion to amend.
Okay, the amend is to, on, on premise only. Okay, now the vote on that one.
Okay, that's a minute.
Unanimous.
Now voting on the main motion?
All right, motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted as amended.
Good luck with the business.
Thank you, thank you.
Item 16, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only doing business as Old Selma Grocery at 6200 Old Selma Road.
Your name for the record, please, one of you?
Is Rafiqul Alun Khan.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak against this item, please come forward this time. You want to speak against this item, come forward this time. You want to speak, speak against this item?
My name's Pete Alves. I live on Old Selma Road.
I didn't get his name. What's your name?
Your name, sir, for the record?
Pete, Peter Alves, A-L-V-E-S.
Okay, you got that, Madam Kirk?
Alves, A-L-V-E-S.
Yes, it.
Old Selma Road.
Yes, sir, Old Selma, okay, yes, sir, go ahead.
This is the second time, actually the third time since 2019, that we've gone through this process. And it's always liquor being the priority product. You know, they want to open a store, right, within a hundred yards of them is, is Dollar General, a multimillion-dollar corporate store, and a couple of hundred yards the other way is, is B&amp;J's that's been there for 60 years, okay? And their product line hasn't changed. So considering the population in that area, which hasn't changed in 60 or 70 years, there's been no growth. The last growth was in the 70s when they finished Selbrook, okay? So I'm, I'm not clear on, you know, nobody, you know, and going back a little, backtrack a little, the first time this happened back in 2019, we had, we had a petition with 200 signatures, all homeowners, no renters or anything like that. If that's necessary, we'll do it again, you know? I'll get more next time, okay?
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm confused on the target market here. If liquor is the priority, and then they have to stipulate it's just wine and beer, well, it's still liquor, okay? We have citizens here, some even here, that are concerned about things like almost every wreck in the area, Sellem Road or Mitchell Young Road, alcohol is involved, okay? One person even suggested that you hear, you know, people spend their family earnings and, but they can go buy liquor, you know? So the kids do without and all that kind of stuff. So I'm just, I'm just, you know, and there's a school nearby, of course, too, and churches and all that, we all know that. But I, I, you know, I'm concerned, I'm totally opposed to this. I'm not opposed-
You ask for other people with you that are opposed to it also? Are you the only person here that opposes it?
Well, there's nobody gonna speak.
Stand up, please.
Yeah, from, from the area, from the Katova Valley area.
Okay, very good, okay. I think that, I think you answered that question. You oppose this, and we understand why, okay?
Need anything else from me?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ed Ryan, counsel, thank you for letting us come. Mr. Khan is a new immigrant here. He bought the store down there, he's the new owner. He didn't realize that if there's any issues, he doesn't know of any issues at this time, and so we've come before you in case there's some things we need to do, but he's just trying to open a new store.
Name for the record?
You said Mr. Khan?
Yeah.
Ed Fleming, Ed, she needs your name.
Oh, that's Ed Fleming that was talking.
Yes.
Ed Fleming was talking.
Well, I do, Mr. President, I do appreciate that this young man has purchased this building and wants to start a business. We encourage business, small minority businesses in the City of Montgomery, and I do hope that you do just that. But I have had numerous emails and calls from the community in that area that they are not in support of this. The sheriff who will patrol it more than our police department has said that they are not in agreement with selling alcohol in that area, and so I'm gonna have to follow that lead. If the community around you is not in agreement with it, they're not gonna support you. You don't want to be in the area, because nobody's gonna drive from East Montgomery all the way out down Old Selma Road, out of the, almost out of the city, well, out of the city limits, to patronize your business just for alcohol. Now, if you sell something else that's unique to you, then they might drive way over there to do that, and then you make that money, and you become a, you know, a recipient of some great revenue. So, but at this time, I'm sorry, we're not gonna be able to approve that. That's what I'm asking the council to vote with me, to deny this petition for-
I need a suspension rule.
Um, y'all understand it? Okay, motion to suspend the rule?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to deny?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is denied.
Next item?
Seventeen, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only doing business as Payless Food Mart, 3055 Woodley Road.
Representative Payless Food Mart here, yes, sir. Your name for the record?
Chris Raymond.
Okay, Chris. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak against this item, please come forward. Sir, you want to speak? Are you with Chris?
Yeah, I'm with Chris, sir. Yes, sir, I'm with him. I'm with him.
Are you with him, okay, all right. See, declared public hearing's been held, par for the council, any motion?
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right. Motion to adopt?
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with the business, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Item 18, resolution reappointing Laurie Will to the museum board.
Move to the rules. On the rest of the agenda?
Correct.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt? All in favor, raise your hand.
Are you not suspending the rules?
I'm not suspending the rules. I want to bring number four back up before we suspend the rules for the rest of the meeting, Mr. President.
Okay.
So it's, it's, you had, it's old business.
Okay, we carrying it over?
No, no, it's just old business.
It's on the last of the agenda, it's gonna be the last item on the agenda.
It was old business.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, now, you suspended the rules? Unanimous.
Move to adopt? Now, vote to adopt? All in favor, raise your hand.
Ms. Johnson? Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
All right.
Item 19, pursuant to section 1153V1 Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at the listed location.
Yeah, my, you know, approval?
What are we on, apologizing?
We on the teardowns?
Tardowns.
Number 19.
No. Motion to suspend the rules?
No, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt?
Yeah, all in favor, raise your hand. Good luck with your business.
Unanimous.
Okay. All right. Number 20, you have a motion to adopt?
Resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing-
Motion to adopt.
Public uses on various lines.
All in favor, raise your hand?
Who made the motion?
Mr. Ed, Mr. Grimes did.
Okay. Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
All right, now bring it back, go back to number four? All right, number four, what are we gonna do with number four?
Make a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider.
We just moved to him.
He just moved it to the end, though.
I just moved it to the end. We're in vote.
Okay, there.
All right. I need a motion to do something with this. It's all business.
Vote yes or no.
So, well, let me, let me, can I say something before we vote yes or no? I know we've been here a long time. So this ordinance talk about flying a flag, but if we just did vote it to not fly any flags out here, so that part is moot. So we would have to amend it to not, now, if we wanna, I mean, I'm all right with declaring this month, you know, Christian Heritage Month, because they can display that however they want to, private property. If they want, you know, if that's what we want to do as Christians. They just can't put the flag up here, but you can't, but we done already closed it to put the flags up here, so we can't put the flag up at the, on the city property. Right, so it's just, right, just flag pole. So they can't do that, and that's one part of this resolution. So we can't, that got to come out. But I guess if we amend that, basically, all we doing is just doing a resolution that says September is their month, is our month, because I'm one of them. Stacy? You want to change it to November? You want to take Thanksgiving?
Uh, Mr. President, Stacy, what's your legal opinion on that?
Well, I think, uh, city flag poles out in the period, and, but we fly them on city property.
Well, and they don't city property, well, no, 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 no. What you gonna fly them in, if it ain't on the-
Light poles.
Light poles.
Huh? Oh, so the, so the one that we approved that says, it just said-
They don't always talk about light poles. There's only flag poles on.
So they can still fly them on the light bulb?
Light bulbs, yeah.
What kind of foolery? I mean, did we?
That's what I'm saying.
We need to reconsider that one, too.
Y'all didn't read it. Okay. That's, that's pinched up on number four. Come on, that's, that's pinched up on number four.
I'd like to, I'd like to adopt it, but take out flag poles owned by the City of Montgomery.
Now, we're on number four? You coming at number four?
Yes.
Okay, you taking out flag pole?
Take out flag poles owned by the City of Montgomery.
Where is it in here?
It wouldn't be, what about your?
Stacy never did, um, make her comment.
It's on the third page. I mean, yeah, third page.
Mr. President, Stacy never did, um, make her comment.
I understand, okay.
I would caution you that when you do this, you will be inundated with requests to establish certain months by resolution.
It's not a neutrality agreement, but I don't like it.
Stop it right now. Okay, I need a motion. I need a motion.
I don't even know.
I need a motion.
I, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
You got motion to deny?
Yep.
All in favor of denying this?
Wait a minute, does he, he had a motion to adopt and then a motion to amend.
Did you have a motion?
Are you withdrawing that motion?
Want to, uh-
Are you withdrawing those two emotions? Two motions?
I want, I want to do a, adopt and a motion to amend.
Okay.
Now, that's on the floor. You've made those.
All right, now, I need a, most of them in, tell me what the motion to amend is.
And what I want to do is take out city flag poles.
Okay.
Where's that at?
Where is it at?
It's on the-
Third page, be it further resolved, the second one from the bottom.
Yeah, it says that the, we want month of November.
What, which paragraph, sir?
The second paragraph from the bottom on the third page.
Says now therefore be resolved by the council of the City of Montgomery that the month of November each year takes nation's American Heritage, uh, Christian American Heritage Month to recognize the many positive impacts of Christian religious beliefs on Americans' heritage and freedoms. No, it's the next paragraph, uh-
What page are you on?
It's on the third page.
Third page.
Third page.
The City of Montgomery should fly during the entire month, except tip. I'm gonna keep it whole.
Now, he's changing November.
To November. And we'll put on city light poles out in front of City Hall.
I'll just go ahead and hang one in front of the roof building.
Just hang one in front of the building.
There you go.
Okay, you're amending the second, be it, the first, be it further resolved.
I'll tell you what, I'm gonna carry it over. Let's carry it over.
Yeah, draw something up that we can read.
All right, item number four, we carry it over.
Well, I'm gonna change my mind again.
No, don't do that. Yeah. Let's have an open conversation. I think we'll get through it together.
It needs to die.
Hey, just draw something up we can read without all these changes in it.
What I want to do is just let, let's do it out in front of City Hall on the light poles.
What you gonna do? I need a motion. I need a decision. We're gonna sit here all night, wait.
I'm on, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna go ahead and carry it over. We'll work on it.
Carry it over, okay.
Give us something.